Oh, there we go. Okay, welcome, everyone. Seeing at 7:00 PM, we have a quorum, full house tonight. I hereby reconvene this meeting, Committee of the Whole meeting. Welcome to our Committee of the Whole's monthly meeting. Reminder, we're being recorded and you can watch this via livestream or on our YouTube channel, or it will be aired at Telil for the next seven days. I'll begin by acknowledging that we are gathered here today in Unamaghi, the land of the fog, a part of Migmagi, the unceded traditional territory of the Migma people since time immemorial. We honor and thank the Migma for sharing our lands and home with us. As our agenda illustrates, we held an in-camera session earlier this evening. Are there any motions from council coming from that in-camera? Counselor Mumberkatt?
Thank you, Warden. I'd like to make a motion to approve the taxi license application for Willie's taxi as discussed in camera.
Can I have a seconder?
Second.
Seconded by Deputy Warden Sampson. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Those opposed? Counselor Marshawn, do we have? Yes, great. So that is, motion is carried. The...
It's already, okay.
Yep. So, we're going to now look at the agenda. So, you have it in front of you, was circulated last week. Are there any additions to the agenda as circulated? Hearing none. I'll ask for a motion to approve the agenda as circulated. Moved by Counselor Mumberkatt. Can I have a seconder? Seconded by Deputy Warden Sampson. All those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes. Those opposed? Motion carries. So, for those folks following along at home, on pages five to 10 of your, of the meeting package are the minutes from our June 10th meeting. I would be interested in hearing if there are any errors or omissions. Otherwise, I would ask for a motion to approve the minutes as circulated.
I'll make a motion to approve. We're getting back to the swing of things, right?
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the minutes of the January 10th meeting. Can I have a seconder? Seconded by Deputy Warden Sampson. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes. Those opposed? Motion carried. I will say, there wasn't a motion of counsel on this point, but just for your information, I did let the schools know about the Dave Gunning Zero Hunger Food Fund. It wasn't a motion to counsel, but I'm just letting you know. So, presentations. So, we will now move to our presentation to council. We only have one tonight, so that's great. We'll get lots of information from Terry Smith, CEO of Destination Cape Breton, who is going to speak to us about the CBRM marketing levy decision and the impacts on Destination Cape Breton and regional tourism. So, welcome. And I will turn it over to you.
Just give it a second.
Yeah, I turned them.
The camera has to zoom in on you.
Okay.
Okay, well, thank you all. It's great to be here. I want to also acknowledge that Robin Cotton, our newest board member and your Richmond County representative on our board, is also with us this evening. So, I'll just dive into my presentation. So, just in terms of the marketing levy, on June 10th, the CBRM council made the decision to keep 50% of the marketing levy funds that they collect in their jurisdiction to start their own events initiative. So, we weren't in favor of this decision. However, the decision has been made. After doing some due diligence, our board recently decided to accept the decision and move forward. The decision has required us to adjust our budget by $312,000 for this fiscal year. So, part of that adjustment was that the pursuing of major events was something that we did, that we had assigned a fair bit of budget to. So, we lost some of the revenue, but we also lost the responsibility for that function as well. So, that's where most of the reduction came from. We also reduced some operational expenses and made some reductions to what we would say was non-core, kind of the nice-to-haves and not-the-need-to-have elements of our marketing and destination development areas. One thing that you should be aware of is that the Board of Destination Cape Breton directed us in making those cuts and how they will be felt going forward, that the decision of one municipality should not impact the tourism industry in the other four municipalities. So, we're focused on ensuring that is the case. So, none of your industry is going to be impacted by those cuts. On the other side of the equation, CBRM is still projected to be the second-largest contributor of marketing levy funds this year. In previous years, they would be the largest, but they'll be the second-largest. Going forward next year, it may be that they're second or third. We'll wait to see that, what that is. But still, a significant contributor to the overall promotion of the island. So, I think it's important to note that as well. So, it's something we didn't agree with, we feel we have to live with, and, you know, there is an adjustment, but it's something that, you know, we feel that we can still do our job, removing that events function from what we had previously been doing. Also wanted to give you an update on where we are at this point in the year, since I am here. So, we wrapped up our summer campaign. We're into promoting fall now. We've, we're in the midst of shooting a new creative theme for 2026. So, one of the things in our research that we had conducted over the last couple of years, we had partnered with some consultants who did look at the economic impact of our tourism industry. And in that, they provided some scenarios. And they basically said, if we can increase the length of stay of everyone who visits by a day, that would have the biggest bang for their buck. So, we're taking that into our new creative for the coming year, and it's really going to be focused on extending that length of stay. And as part of that, it's really educating people that they have a lot more to visit around the island. It's not just the Cabot Trail. There's a lot more to visit around the island. It's also the first time that we'll be taking a humor-focused approach. And hopefully sometime a little bit later this fall, we'll have something that we can share with you folks that gives a bit of a sense of the direction, but we're really, really pleased with how it's coming together. And it will feature Richmond County as part of the campaign as well. From a strategy perspective in terms of marketing, we're conducting some brand research on the island, and that's to be delivered in late September. So, we'll have some learnings from that, and we're developing, currently developing our marketing plan for 2026. In terms of content, we had some influencers visit us. A couple came from Calgary. There's, as you can see, there's a snippet from an Instagram story from one of those influencers, Naz Rahman, who came from Calgary. And we've got some others lined up as well, taking us throughout the fall. Another thing that we've been doing is really a focus on creating more video, especially for short-form video for Facebook and Instagram reels, TikTok and YouTube shorts. And so, we're collaborating with our content creators around the island, and we're, because we can't do everything ourselves, we're hiring them to go out and create content that's a little bit closer to home. So, just in the last few weeks, we've had videos created. One was focused on specifically here in Arichet by Kaylee Landjul, who's from here. And then, we had another content creator, Tia Lissery. She did a day in St. Peters, and there will be more videos that are coming. We're trying to get all over the island through this program, and it'll be a thing that we do on an ongoing basis. We also recently launched a new website. It's faster, and it's designed to be more user-friendly, and we're working on it, making it as AI-friendly as possible, as well as going into the future. AI agents may be used more and more to plan people's trips, but they have to find the content somewhere. So, we're trying to be the source of the Cape Breton Island content. There's also a content hub, a big database that's been developed as part of this, and so that's where we're ensuring that everything is up to date. And if there was a community that wanted to develop their own website, for example, we can provide them all sorts of content, feed it right to them. Doesn't cost us anything, so that's one thing that we can do. And we also have robust community sections that are added to the site. So, I just got a few, I'd encourage you to go check it out for yourselves when you get a chance, visit CapeBreton.com. But just looking at Cape Breton's south coast, this is kind of the landing page. This is a summer landing page. I should mention, too, that you can select what season you want to view when you go there. So, we have people visiting our website at different times for different reasons, so we decided to have this season selector, so the content completely changes depending upon what season somebody selects. This one is summer. I think these are fall, though, yeah. So, it'll show you, you know, what's to do from outdoor adventure within that season, arts, cultural heritage, food and drink, places to stay, events, and so forth. So, but we also have community pages for the different communities as well, that will have more robust information there, and that's something that we'll be continuing to work with the communities to add to as we go forward. From a destination development standpoint, we've worked on a sustainable tourism plan for the past year, and it's all done. It's just been run by our board, and we'll be rolling that out just within the next few weeks. We partnered with Tyance, the Tourism Industry Association of Nova Scotia, this past year on a pilot program. They chose us and the Yarmouth area, and it was basically providing training to the industry. So, 332 industry members across the island received different forms of training, everything from mixology to customer service. VICE concierge program. So, we're working with those folks like Anne-Marie in St. Peters on looking at the potential to use the knowledge that our folks that work in our visitor information centers have to help people plan their trips in the off-season. So, this is something we're just exploring the feasibility of right now, but we hope that if more people would use the expertise of these folks, that they can hopefully get people to plan to stay longer when they visit as well. We have an accommodation needs assessment being developed for the island. That'll be out by the end of this month. We're also partnering with some other areas of the province on a Nova Scotia boating collective. There's a group that's been formed. Birdore Lake will be definitely, and Coastal Cape Breton will definitely be a big part of what they promote. They've secured some funding for photography and video, and definitely St. Peters Marina is one of the members of that, but we would envision others being a part of that as well. And I think last time I was here, we talked about the potential for ATV tourism, and we're starting that process. So, within the next month or so, we'll be meeting with ATV clubs and starting the process to look at developing an assessment for, a market assessment for ATVs. So, results year-to-date. So, most of what we do marketing-wise, we try to draw people to our website. Our website traffic this year is up 25% year-to-date. We also measure very closely our clicks from our website out to the tourism industry, the operators. They're up 12% year-to-date, but just since we launched our new website a few weeks ago, and this is part of the design of that site, clicks to operators are up 31%. So, it's definitely heading in the right direction. This is from September 3rd, this data. We just passed yesterday, 1.4 million. So, last year was a record at 1.5 million. We're going to be far past that. Our markets, all of our markets are up. And room nights sold, we only have this data to the end of May. It was down 6% to the end of May. That's going to turn around over the next couple of months, though. The big difference, though, was that in March of 2024, we hosted the World Women's Curling Championship in Sydney. That was about 3,000 room nights on its own, so that was the biggest part of the drop. But we know that June, July, and August have been very strong months, so that will completely turn around. Short-term rental units, this is one area where we have data that's specific to Richmond County that we can share. So, to the end of August, short-term rental units sold were up 25% in the county. I should note, though, that July and August were up 5%, so showing good growth. As well, the average daily rate was up 10%, so people are making more money out there. And the other thing that we look at is Parks Canada sites. Fortress of Lewisburg up 28%, Alexander Graham Bell, 31%, Cape Breton Highlands National Park. Their visitation data, they've told us, because of the free admission, that's a little bit harder for them to track, so they won't have good numbers till the end of the year, but camping was up 10%. The other thing that I just received, actually, I'd been waiting for it, was the traffic through the canal. And as of yesterday, they were at 955 boats. It's probably pacing to be about on par with where it was last year, but they've said that they're seeing more American boats this year. So, that's interesting and good to see. And that's the update from me. Happy to answer any questions.
I'll throw down to any councilors who have any questions. Counselor Marshawn?
Thank you, Terry, for the presentation. The numbers that you have for the loss of CBRM marketing revenue, $300,000. What do you take in in marketing revenue, or the fee, the levy?
The levy? So, this year, it would be about, it would have been about $2 million. It'll be about 1.7, I think. Yeah.
So, what county is going to be number one?
No surprise.
Cabot is, you know, the big part of that, yeah.
So, the operation of DCV, is that mainly marketing levies?
Yeah, it's about, it's a little over 81% of our total budget.
Total budget?
Yeah.
Looking to increase, get people to stay extra. Is that more advantageous than trying to get more people here, or you're doing both?
Oh, we're doing both, yeah. But if we just stayed with the same number of people that we attract, but get them to stay a day longer, it will have a significant impact. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Warden, and thank you, Terry. Great presentation. It's certainly been on my mind since hearing the news coming from CBRM. I know you talked about removing major events, reducing core operational. The reduction in non-core marketing and destination development areas, I mean, at the end of the day, how is, how is that not going to affect the other municipalities in the sense that, you know, such a huge number of people are marketed to come to see, you know, to Cape Breton and end up going to CBRM? Like, I'm just, can you tell me a little bit more about how you're trying to kind of insulate us from the impact of that decision? Because it's a pretty significant impact, right? So...
Yeah, so, for example, if we're going to reduce, you know, how much content we are going to be creating, there would be less in CBRM than there would be, and nowhere else would be affected. So, it's more decisions like that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Doing what you can strategically to try to soften that blow, which I think will be a blow, you know, felt by many, but...
Like, that you mentioned as well.
Yeah.
We're, we've just started this, but our team is looking at other ways to raise revenues. So, we're going to be coming up with some other concepts. So, none of these have gone through our board yet, so it's premature, but we're looking at ways that we can recoup some of what was lost.
And just one quick follow-up, thank you. So, then, I did also notice that unlike CBRM, in Richmond County, I think in particular, we have a pretty limited number of traditional accommodations. So, when I see the 5%, you know, increase for our short-term rentals, like, I feel like we felt that in our communities this year. I know here on the island, your festivals were huge, you know, the Disco's one, and in St. Peter's the same. So, is, like, what can we do to kind of tap into or to work with you to kind of make those folks stay longer? Like, what can you, what can community organizations or communities in general do? Like, I mean, I assume you're staying for the rest of the week for Pirate Days, but aside from that, you know, are there, you know, is there an opportunity to work with your team to do some, like, activity creation or, like, program creation that might help?
Sure, and I think it's, I think there's a part for us to play, but there's also a part for communities to play, like, in promoting the nearby communities and that sort of thing, which, you know, Shawna Austin is also a board member, and I know from getting the experience from Shawna, like, she won't let you leave, like, until she's educated on everything and why you need to spend a week just in Richmond County. So, anyway, I think there are things that we can do in terms of educating people more on what else there is to do for them, you know, things to do wise, reasons to stay. I think it's key to get them, get to them when they're planning their trip, so that they're not just planning to come here for three, four days, that we're getting them for a week or longer. So, that's part of our strategy. But then, when they're here, it's really, you know, doing the job of talking to people while they're here and educating them on what they can do that's just nearby.
Thank you.
Terry, with the, some of the reasons that CBRM took away this levy, have they expressed that to you?
Yeah.
Or kept the levy? Are they using it to promote tourism on their own?
They say they are using it specifically to attract more major events to their community.
Are you worried that if you reduce the level of service to them, that they're going to cut the rest? Because they are still going to be number two next year.
Yeah.
So, they're going to want still some service, more than others. So, if you start cutting that, because these major events, like, give an example of some of them that you were looking to bring or involved with bringing.
Well, ECMA's will be back here next year. We played a role in making sure that was going to happen. There's another national music event that I can't announce yet, but that looks like it's going to be coming here, that we played a role in. But whenever I say "we played a role," we would always do it collaboratively with other partners. Sometimes it's CBRM, actually, oftentimes it was CBRM, but sometimes Member 2, Cape Breton University, and sometimes other partners. So, those sorts of things. Now, the municipality is going to take the lead on that, and, you know, will play a supporting role, I suppose. In terms of, I should note, like, most of the 312 that we've cut, like, there's very, there's very little impact beyond, like, we're talking, you know, in the tens of thousands instead of hundreds of thousands in terms of, of, once we remove the events element that we have to deal with, that's been cut from marketing or destination development. So, it's not going to be something that's going to be hugely felt, but the board said, you know, as a directive to us, that the other municipality shouldn't feel the effects.
So, did you cut positions to save some of that money?
There was one position that was an events-focused position that's been cut. Yeah.
Okay. The next thing, I heard you say that you're going, you're looking, and you haven't expressed this to the board yet, of ways to raise more money. It's not going to be an increase to the marketing levy, I hope?
No, it's not.
Okay.
Some innovative ways is what we're looking at, some, yeah.
It will not be an expense to the tourists, will it? When you say innovative ways?
No, no expense.
The tourists is what we're looking at. By the same, I'm making that extra money. Thank you.
You'll have to press it again, sorry. I cut you off.
Yeah, I see Terry, where you said, yeah, there's an accommodation needs assessment coming at the end of September. Can you predict anything there, or do you see any kind of surprises coming out of that assessment, or...
I can tell you what I have heard so far from the consultant. There are certain communities around our island that have lost bedrooms. At the same time, there's been growth, so there are gaps in different places around the island. I don't anticipate there's going to be, you know, tremendous need here yet, but one of the, one of what I anticipate is going to be a message is going to be about quality. And so, this is something that I suspect is going to come back in a couple of different ways. So, I mentioned we have some brand research that is being conducted and some preliminary results. There were a couple of issues related to quality. So, I think that's something that the island as a whole will likely have to take a look at.
When you were here previously, you talked about how... I, I, when you were here previously, you talked about how last summer there was some concern that the fires in Halifax impacted and that there was just this sense that there was a fire in Nova Scotia, the whole province was ablaze. Do you anticipate any of those same findings? Like, have you heard any rumblings about fire, the reports of fire impacting people's decisions to travel here?
The woods ban has, has impacted, you know, some folks. We have heard that, that some people have received cancellations, and particularly, you know, there are some companies that operate more in the woods that haven't been able to do so, but, you know, what we heard in general was that there were some cancellations, but not anything major. So that was, that was reassuring. The other thing, too, I think the province in its messaging, I think they did a really good job. I think they probably learned from the last time that, you know, just because there are fires in one part of the province, there's a whole other part that's, that's open for business and needs that business. So I, I think that they did a really good job at messaging this time, so it allayed a lot of those concerns.
Yeah, that's great. It would be, you know, at the rate the climate concerns are facing us, you know, if we have to face the same problem every year, which is, you know, reduced travel because of fear of fire or fire each summer, so. Great, any other questions? I, I think we've, well, thank you very much. We appreciate your time, and we appreciate the, the reassurances that come from this presentation around the levy and C B R M.
Any other questions, feel free to reach out.
Great, thank you, and thank you to Robin, our rep, who is here with you tonight as well.
No stranger to the room.
That's right, yeah.
Thanks for supporting me.
There you go. Thank you very much. Okay, so there are, we're on to new business now. There are two items under this agenda item, so for folks following along at home, page twenty-five to thirty-four of your package, there is a briefing note on this topic, which is Recreation Nova Scotia Conference sponsorship. So you'll see on the first page in that briefing note, there is a recommendation from staff that council allocate funds in the amount of a thousand dollars to become a silver sponsor of the event that's taking place in Cape Breton. Thank you, Terry. So there's quite a bit of information about that conference, but I will throw it out to anybody who would like to make a motion to that effect, or, yes, Counselor Marshawn?
Counselor?
I think a motion would keep us on track. Just, I'd like to move this to discussion, and so I'm, I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation to become a silver sponsor for a one thousand dollars.
Great, and that would be a recommendation to become, for Committee of the Whole to recommend to council that we be a silver sponsor. So that's the motion on the floor. Can I have a second, or for the purposes of discussion, seconded by Counselor Sampson? So there is a motion on the floor that's been seconded. Counselor Marshawn, do you have something you'd like to raise?
Yeah, so do we have some, we budgeted an amount for sponsorship, is that where you intend that this is coming out of?
Yes, sir.
Not to put you on the spot, but do you know how much so far, because we did sponsor some events, so is there very much left? It wasn't a large amount we had, but.
Off the top of my head, I think this puts us at about eight thousand of a twelve thousand dollar budget line.
Okay, I'm just wondering, some of these events, just because other neighboring municipalities support it, I don't think we should support it just for that. How many are, are you intending to send to it? Because there's not only sponsoring it, then there's the cost of sending people, if our intention is to send people. So that money doesn't come out of sponsorship?
It does not.
So, you know, these kind of events, especially with Zoom and stuff like that, I'm wondering if we can gather the information some other way? As opposed to, you know, is there an advantage to us to do, to sponsor some of these events, you know? Spoke of other events before.
Madam Chair, the advantage to this and sending any of our professionals to these conferences is the comeback with new ideas and best practices to deliver the programming. So the sponsorship isn't just the dollars, it's the support for the department and what we're trying to learn and the services we're trying to provide to our citizens. No different than N S F M or A Man's or any other professional conference that we send staff to.
Sorry, I cut you off there, but I, I also will say that on page thirty-one of your package, it does actually specifically talk about the benefits of each level. So for the silver representative, silver level, there is logo representation on display in the main lobby, link to the website and so on, so, and there's also ad space on the guide site. So, you know, for better or worse, there are reasons why we sponsor. And the benefit to staff, I think, is to the C A O's point, is that, you know, this is, we would expect staff to, to grow professionally and to be able to contribute to conversations with their colleagues and to get information from their colleagues. So it's up to us to decide. Traveling to conferences, though, is not within the purview of council. That is an administrator's responsibility to determine where his staff goes. So the only question for us is whether we want to spend the sponsorship dollars we've already allotted through the budget on this item. Is there any other discussion on that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd be fine with supporting it, but I don't know what the appetite would be even for a bronze, possibly, just based on where we are in the year and how some of these funds get depleted pretty quick. But if there's not, I'm not, I definitely wouldn't be comfortable above the silver, but I can live with that.
I'm wondering, C A O, if, if there is a sense that, maybe go a little heavy, is this something that travels across the province?
It does.
So it is being hosted in our own backyard, I think.
It was in, it was last year.
But it does travel further away, I think, because I think when it's in Cape Breton, that would, I, I agree with you about the level of sponsorship, except that this is being held in our, in our backyard, that's my opinion. Counselor Marshawn?
So if we don't sponsor it, can our employees still go to the sessions? Yeah, so that's my thing. There's no advantage to sponsor. Our employees can still go and gather the information from their colleagues that are going to help us or help them. So what's the advantage to us sponsoring this, other than having a delegate breakfast, a lunch, a dinner, individual workshop shops, sessions? I mean, if they're going to be able to get all the sessions, what's the advantage of sponsoring it? Like, does it prevent our staff from getting any of the, any sessions of the event?
You could ask that question of every single event that we sponsor, and yet we have allocated a good chunk of money to sponsorship. So there is money in a sponsorship budget, and the question is, is this one of the sessions we would like to use those budgeted funds for, yay or no, although we don't say yay, yes or no? So, so I would say to you that there is information in the staffing note, and there is specifically on page thirty-one, the, the sponsorship benefits. And so it is up to us as a council to decide if this is the event, so, but you are a hundred percent correct. Staff can still go. Go ahead.
So some of the sponsorships that we have done have been for events right here in this county, right? Have some of that money, so I don't have such an issue with that. We're sponsoring an event, the money's going to help, as some have happened in your area. This, we're sponsoring an event that's somewhere else, in another county. So that's where I have an issue. Our staff going is to your discretion, it helps them, I don't have an issue with that. I do have an issue with putting a thousand for that. When we can sponsor events that are happening with community groups in, in, in our area and have our banners there, I don't have such an issue. It's a bit of a revenue stream for some of these groups. I have an issue with this. Thank you, Warden.
Okay, anyone else? Yes, Counselor Member Kat?
Thank you. So I guess one of the reasons I'm just supporting this is because I feel like Recreation Nova Scotia is a very important partner to the municipality. We have an entire department and staff, employees devoted to recreation and, and community development. So, so I think that it's important that we, especially because it's kind of in our backyard, you know, only about an hour away, depending on where you live, and, you know, so, so I think it's really important for us to demonstrate to Recreation Nova Scotia and to our other partner Recreation, you know, municipal contacts that, that were supportive of hosting this in their area. And I, I know how much it takes to lift a conference like this, so, thank you.
Just to a discussion earlier, were you saying that Recreation Nova Scotia hosts some meetings here sometimes, within the building and so on as well? Yeah, like regularly, or semi-regularly, for, yeah, so that would impact my thinking on it a little bit as well, I think, yeah.
Great, so the purpose of meetings like this is for us to make decisions that we may not all agree on. It's our responsibility as councillors, all five of us, to put our concerns forward so other councillors can take our views into consideration. I think everyone has done a good job of that. Unless there's any new information to bring to the table, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, please signify by saying yes. Yes. Those opposed? No, Counselor Marshawn, and that is. No, no is good, no nay, no nays, please. No nay, never. Okay, so, so moving on to page thirty-five in your package, should you be following along at home. This is a totally different issue under new business, so this takes us to a matter of public work. So this is regarding cost-shared road paving of J-class roads for the twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven fiscal year. So again, information is included in the meeting package in the form of a briefing note. Staff are asking for direction from council about applying to the province for cost-sharing for paving, repaving, and double-chipping of J-class roads in the municipality for the twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven season. So you can see there are options presented in the action required section of this briefing note, so I'm looking for interest in making a motion that would move us on this discussion. And there is quite a bit of information about where the J-class roads are in Richmond. Yes, C A O.
Additional information for your consideration is, as you can see, in twenty-twenty-three, we put three roads forward. Marshawn was eventually done. We did not submit in twenty-twenty-four. There were no roads submitted in twenty-twenty-four. I think we were tied up with an election at that point. And we have reached out through our public works to the provincial public works. Have they identified any roads in our area that they think should be added to this list? So we haven't heard back from them yet, but we're hoping to have that passed on to you guys as well before the deadline. But right now, we have nothing, other than, looks like Sampson Road and Lobster Plant were the last two on the list that have yet to be actioned.
Yeah, and that was, I guess.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, sorry, that was, I guess, one of my questions is, just because Sampson Road and Lobster Road are there, are there any roads that have deteriorated at a faster rate that might not be the same priority? So am I hearing from you that there is information not available to us this evening that could be available to us by the next Committee of the Whole meeting that would still get us to the October deadline?
Possibly.
But then we won't have a regular council meeting.
When's the date?
Yes, we will.
When's the first?
October thirty-first, right? So would it be reasonable for, sorry, go ahead, deputy?
We did have discussion more recently than that, though, I'm pretty sure, on, on these roads, because when Marshawn Lane was done, like, we, we did it since then, because we, we redid the order and none of them were approved. So I'm pretty sure there should be, like, a more recent.
I don't think a submission went in, though, because I think it was just luck that those two.
No, I think.
Really, those two don't get actioned, because you have to action it each year, and I don't think there was a submission put in. We couldn't, we did not find a submission, I think she was going to grab me.
She can do it in there as well.
Because, yeah, we did go through this, because I remember bringing up King's Road at this time. Fairly certain I remember bringing up King's Road at the time because of the issue they're having with the collapsing culvert. And that was the, basically, the reasoning behind it was at least if they were to do this, it would sort of force the issue of having to fix that culvert. But it wasn't one that was necessarily on our list the very first year. So I know we did discuss it, because Marshawn Lane was the first one ever got done, and we, I'm almost certain I thought we got turned down hereafter, yeah.
Chair, let us take this back, then. We do have time, and hopefully we'll have the public works report by that, and we'll dig and see if we can find that as well.
I do want to mention while you're digging, and I have a photo that I can share with you as well, I have backup. I, I really do think we need to consider Tunnor Lane on this next round as well. So I, I remember it being an issue last year, I, could you, like, if you could check, and you're checking about King's Road, if Tunnor Lane was on there, and if it's not, something I think we seriously need to consider. Right now, even the sign is half of a sign, it's twos instead of Tunnor Lane. So the, the road has deteriorated, the signage has deteriorated, so I'm pretty sure I brought it up last year, which is what I wanted to mention, but I'd really like to see that addressed again.
So what I'm hearing is that we are awaiting some information from the province, but each councillor may want to make sure that any pieces of real estate in their district, if they have any concerns similar in nature, they should pass that to the C A O in a very timely manner so that we would see this on the Committee of the Whole agenda second Tuesday in October, which would go to council the fourth Tuesday in October, which would allow us to make the deadline of the thirty-first. So I think what we can agree on is even if we're not sure which road we want to submit, we certainly would want to be really aggressive about applying for any opportunities for, for roadwork. So given that this is an agenda item, clerk, am I right, that we need an agenda to table this item, or?
That would work.
So I would, I would entertain a motion to table this item until the next Committee of the Whole meeting so that we know that it will automatically be an agenda item. Moved by Counselor Marshawn, seconded by Deputy, or Counselor Member Kat. All those in favor, signify by saying yes. Yes, great, motion is carried. So that takes us to the warden's report, so for those folks following along at home, that's pages forty-two to forty-four, because it is three months' worth of reporting. I will throw that out to council if anybody has any questions, but I, I would like to add two things, just in a spoiler alert. I know it was September, but Friday, we had the opportunity to have the Minister of Energy, our M L A, and our, the Minister of Communities, Culture, Tourism and Heritage, who went around to see the splash pad, the new gym, the playground up the hill, the Lusdale Lions Den project, and the work done at the ball field. So got an opportunity to travel to many of those with lots of folks here, but certainly quite an investment in infrastructure over and above the Richmond, or the St. Anne's Centre that's being built down the road here. And today, we actually had a webinar hosted by the Atlantic Hydrogen folks, put on by Deloitte for our green fuels study, so that was very well, I think that went really well. So that was, that's a spoiler alert for September, but if anybody has any questions about the three reports there, happy to answer any of that. Okay, hearing none. The C A O's administration operations report is on pages forty-five to fifty. So lots going on since we met in June, so if anyone has any questions for the C A O, by all means.
Yeah, C A O, when I look at the sewer treatment plant work done here in Ayrshire, we can all agree that that situation was, was kind of concerning, but I see that there is some work, the work was done, and there's a backup plan for future failures. Is that correct, in assuming that situation, there is?
Yes, sir.
I don't, okay.
Televised, we'll, we'll use it as a public service area to remind people that, you know, sanitary napkins, wet wipes, all that stuff, do not flush. They go in the garbage, those things, I forget where I saw it today, London, I think it was. They have an entire island of these plastics that just gum up their systems, and it was their way. and it was their wastewater system as well. And I forget how many tons it was of plastic that had gummed up their gears. That was very similar to what happened to us. So, everybody can help us with that.
Councillor Marshon?
Thank you, Warden. Um, some of the, uh, the arena upgrades, I noticed that some areas got some money for some arena revitalization. Have we applied for any of that, or are we not been successful in applying? Because other areas in the province got some, so I don't know how much is in that fund, or if any of that money can help us. It's just, just a little bit of information.
Would you like to make a motion to that effect, councillor Marshon, to direct staff to pursue any, um, or investigate any opportunities to apply for revitalization? Because we, we have committed, and, and I, I believe, you know, we, we, although we are concerned about the snow load, uh, and I'm, I'm sure we'll, you know, get some reassurances about that through the form of a staff report. But regardless, um, we had sort of said, so long as we can manage that, next summer, we want to, uh, look at those repairs. Um, so do you want to make a motion to that effect, directing staff to, to make, uh, to investigate all opportunities?
Okay, I'll make a motion, uh, that we ask staff if the CAO is okay with this, uh, to investigate. I think we had already made something, but investigate all possible fundings for, uh, repairs that need to be done to the arena.
Deputy Warden. So we have a motion on the floor with seconder. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes. Those opposed, that motion carries. Um, so now on to the best part of the evening, not that we don't love some J-class roads here, but, um, back in June, we spoke about May's Volunteer of the Month, and tonight, we're going to do double duty. We get to celebrate the work done by two volunteers. One is from, oh, did I miss something? Acknowledgements first, yeah. Yep. Uh, so, um, yeah, so we have, uh, two volunteers, one for the month of June and one for the month of July. So in June, we recognized the important work done by volunteer Jade Richard. Jade is a young volunteer whose remarkable dedication brings immense joy to the residents of the St. Anne Community and Nursing Care Centre. Several times a week, uh, visiting several times a week, Jade consistently goes above and beyond to brighten the lives of the residents. From crafting heartfelt cards to snapping cheerful selfies and now decorate, uh, that now decorate their rooms, she brings creativity and warmth to every interaction. Whether reading alongside a resident or delighting them with her step dancing, Jade transform, uh, transforms a simple moment into joyful celebrations of connection. Jade also escorts residents to supper and accompanies them on visits throughout the centre, ensuring everyone feels included. When she can't be there in person, she stays in touch through FaceTime, a testament to her unwavering commitment and care. With her boundless hugs and love, Jade truly embodies the spirit of community service, making a lasting difference in the lives of those she serves. Please join us in recognizing Jade for her hard work, dedication, and unstoppable kindness. We thank you for all you do for Richmond County. So, uh, before I move on to July's Volunteer of the Month, I'll throw it over to councillor Sampson, in case you have something you'd like to add.
Yes, thank you, Warden, Andrew. Uh, yeah, I had the opportunity to meet Jade here. She came and visited us, uh, with her mom, and we presented her with her gift bag and, and, you know, thanked her for everything she does. Uh, what a great young girl, and so incredible that she takes the time to visit the St. Anne's Centre regularly and, do what she does for the residents. So, so great to see. Uh, I did recently speak with her, and I asked her if she was still visiting the St. Anne's Centre, and she looks at me and says, "Well, what do you think? I'm gonna give up on them?" So I said, "No, I, yeah, no, I, I never thought for a second you would give up on them," you know. But, uh, she's so dedicated to those residents and what she does, and she enjoys doing it, right? So it's great. Yeah, it's great. Uh, I also have to warn, uh, Premier Houston, uh, if he sees this, that he's not off the hook when it comes to her bagels in the breakfast program. She's stuck on those bagels, and if she doesn't see them, she's, so, so she's not giving up on that, and, uh, yeah, she's not giving up on that, on those bagels in that breakfast program. So just fair warning, uh, that, uh, yeah, uh, that's still on her radar.
I actually, I can tell you she didn't, because, give up on them, because I'm pretty sure I saw her one day this week on her scooter, going in and scooting to the St. Anne's Centre. I could see her on the sidewalk. So, um, thank you very much, councillor Sampson. And now for July's recipient of the Volunteer of the Month recognition, Joan Bona. Joan wears many hats, often all at once, with humility, never seeking recognition. As president and secretary of the Catholic Women's League, CWL, uh, chair of the Flirter League Seniors Historical Committee, and a lead organizer of the spectacular one-hundred-and-seventy-fifth anniversary of Lusdale celebrations, Joan is an active member of the community. From organizing and preserving archival materials for the historical committee, to chairing the one-hundred-and-seventy-fifth Lusdale Anniversary Committee, and everything in between, Joan's passion for contributing to her community is exceptional. She completes each task with local pride. Please join us in recognizing Joan for her hard work, dedication, and her commitment to her community. We want to thank you for all you do for Richmond County. Before I open it up to the floor to, uh, other councillors, councillor Marshon, did you like to add something?
Thank you, Warden. Uh, I as well, on behalf of the whole community, want to thank Joan. Uh, being involved with her with the one-seventy-fifth, uh, she was amazing with that in organizing the whole event. Uh, she had an incredible passion for it. Uh, everything she does, she shows that passion. Uh, she definitely is a great organizer. And, uh, on, on, again, on behalf of everyone, uh, tonight, actually, they're having their final meeting, I think, for the one-seventy-fifth, probably to discuss, uh, getting it on for next, getting not the one-seventy-fifth, but another event similar to it, uh, for next year. And thank you, Joan.
Great. Thank you very much. Um, so I want to take this opportunity to, uh, it's been a busy summer, and I'm sure there are perhaps some things we'd like to say about, uh, members of our own community. Is there anybody who has anything else to bring attention to? Go ahead, councillor Mumberkatt.
All right. Um, I'll start with some, uh, with a few that I wanted to mention, for sure. Um, first of all, congratulations to the Richmond River Roots Garden Market. So I don't, I'm losing the number of letters in the name, but they, you know who you are. Um, they had an excellent AGM on August twenty-sixth. I think it was one of their best-attended ever. Um, great spot to be picking up some local recipes and, uh, entertainment, and they had some local food. Um, so a huge congratulations to them. They've had a banner year, as you can tell from the, um, from the, the little shed outside the, the old, the church there in the river, um, which is busy all the time. Um, I also want to say a congratulations to the Village Fitness Centre on their September first grand opening, which I know you attended, Warden. It was great to have you there. Um, that was a huge milestone for that group. I think they're about three, four years into this massive effort, and I know that it has been a slog for them with a capital S. So, a huge congratulations to them. I want to say also congratulations to Gina McDonald on hosting another, uh, successful Business of Medicine, um, event in, in Richmond County again, but, but on behalf of both Richmond and the town of Port Hoxbury. Uh, she had a number of residents in, and we rolled out the red carpet, and I think that's, you know, that's an important piece of work that she's doing in terms of our future ability to attract healthcare professionals. Um, and I would be remiss in not mentioning the excellent job that the warden did smashing a bottle off of the front end of a tugboat on August twenty-first for Everwind. Congratulations to Everwind on their tugboat christening and the very successful charity golf tournament afterwards. And I'm happy to say that the warden got it on the first try.
It was probably the most stressful thing I've ever done. So they had me on the edge of the wharf, and I had to swing this thing. And I remember things, it's either gonna be a great memory or the end of my political career. And the, it, don't wanna tell tales out of school, but it did take the federal minister of the environment, because she missed, and hit the wharf. But we decided she christened the wharf, and so it was all good. But it was a very stressful thing, but yes, it all went very well. Um, anyone else have anything they'd like to speak to? Councillor Marshon?
Yes, Warden, as you stated, uh, you were there with the Minister of Culture and Heritage and all the other things, and Minister Boudreaux, uh, at the Lines Project. And I want to thank, uh, Tommy and all the Lines members for, number one, the vision to get that done. And number, number two, I guess, the volunteer hours that they, and thank members of the community for all the volunteer hours that they put in, because, I mean, the project is definitely, it's incredible to see it, and hopefully, it gets used, uh, to, you know, for events, I guess, musical events, cultural events, whatever, in the, in, you know, in the summer. So a big thank you to Lusail Lines Club for that.
Yeah, to follow up on those announcements and, and those presentations, uh, I did take part in the Pizzagra Ball Field Ceremony. Um, they put on a show, uh, for the local provincial tournament. Um, and, you know, baseball Nova Scotia was there, and everybody was there, and, uh, you know, the, uh, visiting teams were in amazement of that facility. So just want to thank, uh, everybody involved in, in, in that construction in Project Twenty-Twenty-Five to get that wall built. And, uh, also want to thank, uh, and acknowledge, uh, the board and, and the staff and people that volunteered for the Ayrshire Community Development Association to, uh, build that beautiful playground we have up on top of the hill over here. So hats off to, uh, hats off to everybody in, in that situation as well. So, uh, and then a couple of things that are close to my heart, uh, baseball acknowledgements. Uh, just want to congratulate and acknowledge the Little Ants Hawks for winning the Twenty-Twenty-Five RAB championship. That's back-to-back years for them. And, uh, not to put pressure on you mainland councillors, but, uh, the RAB championship has not left Almedam in a very long time, so, between the, yeah, sorry, I don't want to start an argument, but, uh, just, just saying, that's all. Just saying. And, uh, last but not least, when it comes to, uh, baseball, just want to acknowledge, and this one's close to my heart, because it's a family friend, uh, just want to acknowledge and congratulate Tyler Boudreaux, uh, who just, uh, signed a pro contract, uh, with the New York Yankees. Uh, so that's a great, great accomplishment, uh, for that kid. Uh, he's a great kid and, and worked so hard to get where he's at. Uh, so, right now, uh, he's, uh, he's pitching for the Tampa Tyrpons, which is the A affiliate team for the New York Yankees. Uh, he's appeared in four games. His ERA is one-point-eight-oh. He's pitched, uh, five innings, and he struck, he struck out, uh, he struck out nine hitters in those five innings. So, just a great future for that kid. And, uh, when you look at this community, uh, and the fans, and the baseball fans of this community, uh, there's three teams, the Blue Jays, the Red Sox, or the Yankees, right? And to have this kid, uh, become, uh, a New York Yankee is a, is a great accomplishment. And when you look at his two grandfathers, Adolf Keough and Raymond Boudreaux, they played a big role, uh, in baseball in this community. And, uh, for him to do what he's doing, and, and for them to see their grandson, uh, accomplish, accomplish what he's doing there is, is great. So, uh, your family, your friends, your entire county here in Richmond, Tyler, is very, very proud of you and wish you very well.
Yeah, except that now we all gotta go burn our Blue Jays outfits, right? Because now we're all Yankees fans, I think. I can't do it, yeah. So, um, thank you, yeah. Um, so thank you for that. Um, a, a couple things. Uh, it has certainly been a wild summer i- in Richmond County. Um, I don't think I went to an event that I didn't have to wait out in the parking lot to get my pancakes and sausages, uh, because there was so much going on. And that only happens because volunteers put up with the heat in the summer, and they make all of those events happen. Uh, but just to highlight a couple of things, I do want to say something that I just, somebody sent this to me. I want to send congratulations to the Morgan family. Carol Morgan is a former local of, uh, member of Local Two-Sixty-Nine, but recognized for his achievements in and out of the ring, uh, just a few days ago. And they've named a park in his honor in, um, in Timberley. Uh, he's from Evanston, uh, and so he helped capture St. FX Football's first college bowl, became involved in the top heavyweight representative at the nineteen-seventy-two Olympics, went on to, uh, win a bronze medal, represented Canada in nineteen-seventy-four Commonwealth Games, seven-time provincial champion, four-time Atlantic champion, three-time Canadian champion, one-time Eastern Canadian champion, and one-time North American champion, and never lost a fight against another Canadian. So, uh, there you go, somebody who went away and made it big. And so just congratulations to the Morgan family. Um, our own, uh, one of our residents from River Bourgeois, formerly Lusdale, Tanya Carter, is publishing a book, uh, just published two, actually, two children's books. Uh, so there's a celebration to that effect, I believe, sometime in October. Um, and, and again, thank you to everybody who pulled stuff off. We had a great summer of, um, providing, uh, checks, big, big checks to people, and one of them was the Harborview Wars, uh, crew, who actually raised seventy-five-thousand dollars, uh, for cancer care, seventy-five thousand dollars at their Harbor War event. And it's only, you know, a handful of years old. It's gotta be. Yeah. Yeah. So congratulations to everybody who had special events over the summer, and to the volunteers who make every one of those things happen. So congratulations. Um, so, um, I do want to move us on now to the, uh, matter of correspondence. So, um, we have two items that require action, and then there's a long list of letters that, uh, came and went. So, uh, the first letter is from, uh, it's on page, pages fifty-three to fifty-four of your package. Um, it's a letter from Josie Robinson, who is the Community Engagement Manager of the Docster, Dr. Kingston Memorial Community Health Centre, regarding a request for proclamation Global Media and Information Literacy Week. So, um, you will see some information there about, uh, UNESCO's Global Media and Information Literacy Week, which is October twenty-first, uh, twenty-fourth to the thirty-first. And, um, so I'm wondering how we would like to proceed, councillor Marshon. Member Katt, sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. Um, so, great information. Thank you, Josie, for bringing this to our attention. I totally agree that, um, you know, you know, the, the need for better information and better literacy, it is becoming a threat to public safety. Um, so I would be happy to make a motion for the warden to read the proclamation, um, as presented in, in the package, and then maybe after you could read.
I think you would make a recommendation to
Oh, yes, yeah.
And then you would read it into the record at the council meeting.
Yeah.
Right, yeah. There you go. So, I, so, uh, am I hearing, go ahead, sorry. Okay, so the motion is to, um, recommend to council that we, um, proclaim October twenty-fourth to thirty-first as Global Media and Information Literacy Week. Uh, that will go to council on, uh, the twenty-fourth, I believe it is, uh, where we'd read it at that time. So that's the motion on the table. Can we, any discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor, say yes. Yes. Those opposed, motion carries. Um, the next one, uh, I, I do want to offer some apologies, um, because it, it might seem a little vague. So I, I tried to send a meeting to, um, couns, um, an email to councillors. So, uh, the second, um, correspondence that requires action is from Jacqueline Gerwar, uh, Economic Development Officer for the CDENE, um, regarding a request for a letter of support. So, um, when I forwarded that to Shelley, I, I, I think I made a mistake. So I want to just read the initial email that went with that correspondence, just to make sure everybody's got the same, uh, information. So, "Please see attached the proposal for our Community Hall Festival on Almedam, scheduled for May of twenty-twenty-six. The committee has been working hard to pull everything together and excited to share our progress with you. Name and a logo, seven halls committed to the projects, draft proposal, letter of support from the CDENE, but we do not, uh, and looking for an organization." Um, and so the, uh, information that's on your package, um, pages fifty-five to fifty-eight are the actual proposal. "But at this point, I have seven separate budgets that we have combined. Each hall has decided to apply for their own funding for their project proposal, um, indicating their own request for funding." I have requested and received an official letter of support from the CDENE. Trevor Boudreaux has also agreed to write us a letter of support. I'm wondering if the municipality would be able to do the same. Uh, and so the halls are, uh, applying for funding as we speak. So, um, so this is essentially a letter of support, um, that would be available for this group, um, to be able to solicit funding from other sources. So, looking for, and, yep, so I'm looking for a motion to that effect.
Yeah, so I'll make a motion to write that letter of support for Jacqueline Gerwar.
Seconded by, so we have a motion from councillor Sampson, seconded by councillor Marshon, uh, that we in fact write the letter as outlined, uh, of support. Is there any other discussion on that? Go ahead. Go ahead.
So just a question, and I, like, so I love this idea, and I'm fully supportive of it. I did have a question, though, because there are other Acadian communities in Richmond County. You knew, you knew I was going to ask this, Jacqueline. Would you like to see Lord Vaz on there, or, you know, like, I don't know, some other, so I'm just wondering, you know, again, I'm always a little confused about what's the jur, like, the jurisdictional, geographic jurisdiction of a CDENE project, like, could it be more inclusive of the whole Acadian diaspora of Richmond County?
Can I answer?
No.
Let's talk afterwards.
Let's talk afterwards, but I just wanted to, you knew I was going to ask.
There's a plan.
Okay.
So can I ask, then, that perhaps, could we amend the motion even to write the letter of support following a conversation with CDENE to explore any opportunities to expand or include other communities? So can we, is that something we're comfortable doing, so that the letter of support would follow those conversations?
Yeah, so we could make, so I would have to, okay, process. I would make a motion.
No, you make an amendment to the, yeah.
A motion to amend.
Mm-hmm. To amend the motion to add that we would also encourage the inclusion of Acadian communities in the broader Richmond County area.
Can we have a second or, seconded by councillor Sampson. All those in favor of that amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. So the motion on the floor now is that we would authorize the warden to write a letter of support following a conversation about ways to perhaps include it with jurisdictions. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, councillor, I should have asked for.
So, right now, you're, you're voting on the amendment, right?
Yes, no, we voted on the amendment. So now we're voting on the amended motion, correct.
Okay, so, the one question I have, it's a letter of support, but I do see that they have revenue and they have the municipal in there. Are they asking for us to contribute to this as well, or just offer a letter of support?
Right, and I actually did clarify that. So the individual halls will, through our grants policy, they may apply, and so this is hypothetically speaking, but that is the intention of each hall to put forth their proposals through the grant project. Go ahead.
And the next thing, it's, it's titled Celebration of Almedam, so I'm wondering why we would care, you know, we voted on that, why we would care to include other areas of the county? Because that's the motion we're voting on now, right?
Right, but the motion, the amendment was that I write that letter following a conversation with CDENE about are there any ways to include other Acadian.
Whether it's this year, next year, whatever, you know.
So then, you're not going to not write the letter if they don't include another community? Okay, that's fine, thank you.
Any other conversation on that? Hearing none, all those in favor of the amended motion signify by saying aye. Yes, all.
Aye, yes.
Yes, yes, aye, all the yeses. Those opposed, that motion passes. Okay. Okay, so we have a number of correspondents, many, 18, that are just information, but I don't want to race through them, but I'll, I'll just sort of go through them for the public's benefit, and if there's anything you'd like to stop me on or comment on, or if there's any motions to, to address, by all means, just give me a look. So there is, in our package, from pages 59 to 68, there is information on the Unamagui Cape Breton Island Sustainability Plan, lots of partners involved in that report. There is something from the Honorable John Lor about the value for money audit for the Nova Scotia Firefighters School. That will be of tremendous interest to the Fire Services Committee, for sure. Talks about the fire school being discontinued. That is on page 69 to 70, if you're looking for more information. The Eastern Counties Regional Library Richmond County Community Impact Report, so we get these reports quarterly, I believe, so from April to June of 2025, there's information there about the amount of usage for the libraries in Richmond County, St. Peter's and Peddergrau, very interesting information. Go ahead councillor Marshawn.
Was, was there something about a grant that these people didn't get to utilize for the Mulgrave site? Can I remember that somewhere?
That's in the next correspondence. From, there's a correspondence, letter from Claire Rankin. The very next one, yeah. So in keeping with Mr. Rankin's request back in the spring for us to write a letter about how libraries are funded, his, in his role as chair, he wrote a letter to Minister Dave Ritzy about library funding and speaks about, so not included in the original, the above report, because it's not Richmond County, but it does also oversee Mulgrave, so some information there about some struggles with the fact they own the building there, so that information. So there is a, so item number five on pages 76 to 115, quite a lot of information about the municipal profile and financial conditions indicators results from the 2022-2023 year. So that is extensive, it goes from pages 76 to 115, information that would come to Audit Committee, I assume, so that would be reviewed in more detail, certainly at our Audit Committee meetings. There are two letters which I, sorry, did you?
This report will be on the website. Residents can see.
They usually get uploaded.
Yeah, I'm assuming they would be updated, yeah. Does it have to be accepted in order to be updated? Good question.
It's already published by the province anyway, right?
Right.
Yeah, we don't own the report.
Right, so we don't have to receive it, and, yeah, okay, so it, yeah, should be available. There are two letters to Camp Sampson, and I believe I may have emailed those to you, but just for your information, they are there, and there are two separate letters as per request from council that they be written as such, because the two phases of his project or two sets of phases of his project are at different levels of completion and so on, so that is in support of that development there. There is a glowing report from Deputy Minister LaFleche about the fact that all five of us have completed our code of conduct training on time, bully for us, and, and really kudos to all the folks municipally across the province, because it, for those folks who didn't have an SCC email, it was a little bit of a, so there were some hoops to jump through, so, so good on, good on that, and now that we're all good to go, we, I suspect we'll see more modules like this. There is a letter from Matt Parker, Executive Director of Forestry and Wildlife, regarding adjustments to the fall hunt in response to overpopulation of the deer, the deer, the deer. So you can read that and absorb that as you like. Letter from Becky Druin, Attorney General and Minister of Justice regarding the future of policing in Nova Scotia. So for folks who have an interest in this kind of thing, very interesting review that has taken place over the last several years, and, and so there are some changes that will be coming to cross the province, essentially to make sure that all Nova Scotians have access to the same kind of policing. Some municipalities will see small number of changes and some larger, so there's information about that on pages 126 to 128. There is a letter to Nova Scotia Federation of Municipalities talking about the sustainable funding for public libraries at the request of Eastern County Regional Library. There is another for the credit freeze that we recommended to the Honorable John Lor. We actually have been talking about extending the property assessment cap to Nova Scotians who lose their home in disaster, so this letter, number 13 in your package, 131, is asking the NSFM to take that on as an advocacy issue. There is a letter from the Warden of Digby regarding, again, to the NSFM, asking them to pursue as an advocacy issue road safety and insufficient funding. There is a letter from the commanding officer, Nova Scotia RCMP, regarding the annual review of Nova Scotia's policing. Eastern District Planning Commission has an annual report from 2024 to 2025, which was provided to the board a while back, but following board acceptance of that, it goes to each of the municipal units. So that is an extensive review, talks about the number of building permits, so there's quite a bit of information if you're into the housing game. So you can find that on pages 135 to 177. Cape Breton Regional Hospital Foundation has a report to donors, which we are certainly one, and you see our name there in the big number list, pages 178 to 197. And finally, a letter from Dave Dingwall, President and Vice Chancellor, CBU, regarding our contribution to the medical school there. And I will say, it was asked, even though they didn't come in official correspondence, there were a number of people who, when we got them to do the check presentations, wanted to convey their thanks for the contributions that were made by this council to their, to their efforts. So does anybody have any, I went through those pretty lickety-split, but does anybody have any comments, concerns, queries regarding correspondence?
There's cohort of students, Cape Breton Medical Stu, the school, so I think it's just worth noting. It's exciting.
Yeah, it, it. It really is, there was, there's just so much excitement. I went, they couldn't make it on the day that we were doing check presentations, and I had to go to Sydney for something else, so I did the check presentation up there, and it was just a, there is just a buzz of excitement, so really lots to, lots to be grateful for up there. So there are a review of checks for the three months, sorry, no, for just the month of May, sorry, and, no, I've got that wrong, for June, July, and August. So those are in your package from pages 199 to 217, and a review of action items. So as folks know, whenever there's a motion to council, it gets put on this action list, so we can kind of keep track of that. No questions on any of those? Okay, so we'll now open it up for 15-minute question period. We'll take questions from the gallery or by phone. For folks watching at home, you can call 902-226-9885. There is a slight delay, so we'll listen for those, but if there's anybody in the gallery who has any questions, we're happy to entertain those, or we'll take calls. Thank you.